Good morning. It is Tuesday, August ninth, twenty twenty-two, seven, eight, uh, six fifty-nine AM. We're at the Oaks Public Schools Conference Room for a meeting of the Oaks School Board, regular meeting. I'll call this meeting to order and please stand and.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or members, the agenda was before you or you have it in your packet. Are there any additions or changes or corrections to the minute? I'm, I'm sorry, the agenda. Yeah, are there any, uh, proposed changes to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve? Heimbach moves to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Nagel, seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion passes. Uh, I'd like to welcome all visitors. Uh, we have all staff members today and a couple of other guests. So, welcome and we have anyone on Zoom with us? Uh, thank you for being here. Um, we have some, uh, public communication in our packet. We had two thank you cards for, uh, condolences, um, and library memorials from the Beta family, uh, from Reed Garrison and also from Robert Thorpe for the memorial to the library. Any other communication? If not, we will move on to action items. Uh, the first action item A is the second reading of the twenty-two, twenty-three high school handbook, which we, uh, just delayed from last, last meeting with some, questions or the clarifications. Are we ready to act on that?
Yes.
Is there a motion then to approve the high school handbook as presented, uh, a second reading? Nagel most to approve the second reading of the high school handbook. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Thor, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. I forget Tom, was, did you suggest that we have roll call votes on, on all these?
It, it doesn't matter on these. I would do roll call.
Okay.
You have to think about it.
Okay. All right, uh, please call the roll. Ron DeDee. Yes. Um, Monica Heimbach. Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Sonya Mial. Yes, motion passes five to zero. The next item is second reading of the twenty-two, twenty-three personnel handbook. And that was, uh, also in our packets, um, mostly just referencing policy. Mrs. Sell indicated she had cross-checked all the policy has been updated and included in the manual. That's appropriate. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of the twenty-two, twenty-three employee personnel handbook?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thor moves the approval of the personnel handbook. Is there a second? Second. Uh, Heimbach, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discuss? Hearing none. All those, uh, no, please call the roll. Ron DeDee.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach.
Yes.
Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Sonya Mial. Yes, motion passes five to zero. Now, we have the activity handbook, which we also looked at a first reading last, at our last meeting. And, um, Ms. Paul is here with us, so, uh, is there a motion to approve the second reading of the activity handbook? And, uh, we can have a little discussion since I don't think we discussed much on it last. If there's options to approve. Heimbach moves to approve. Is there a second? Uh, Day, seconds. So, any discussion or questions? Anything you want to highlight, Robin?
I, uh, one part where I think Anna and Gray kind of answered your question on that.
The school attendance.
School attendance. That's always been in there, but it's always been highlighted and I just didn't un-highlight it. So, and that's what I told Anna too. Yeah. But we've worn one by that. If you're not in school, you can practice, unless it's, you know, funeral or medical.
Adam, is there anything else? Question?
Well, I, I guess I'd say that's, it's fine with me and I suggest now that it be un-highlighted just because. Yeah. What's highlighted and that's changed, so.
Well, I'll highlight that, but not for you. You highlight your, your time. I don't have mine. Right, I don't have yours. Cause you just don't get to go through and highlight what I changed. That would be the worst thing.
I guess if you want to emphasize it, maybe put it.
Yeah, because, well, last year we had a lot of, uh, people question it, I guess you could say. And we asked them, why can't my kid play?
No.
Wasn't in school for half a day. That's why. Oh, well, I didn't see that in handbook. Did you read the handbook? Cause it's in there. So this way we thought, well, if you highlight it, they will see it.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Ron DeDee.
Yes.
Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach. Sonya Mial. Yes, motion passes five to zero. Um, now, the second reading of the twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary budget, the approval of the certificate of tax levy and the setting of the public hearing date and time.
Did everybody get the updated? Uh, no, um, we got it done. They got it done last night, twice since we began, so. It looks better than the one.
I got very tough, if you got one.
All right, so. So, are we, are we thinking that we have twenty-one, twenty-two finalized now or?
Yes, twenty-one, twenty-two is finalized. Yep, yep. Yeah, the change is, um, one of the major changes in twenty-one, twenty-two was the Title II and Title IV, that forty-eight, seven, six, under revenue.
And so it's under, um, the Title V?
Title V, okay.
So they, that's they, you were allowed to take your Title II funds and your Title IV funds, merge them together under Title V because then you have a little more flexibility on what you can do with those dollars and you can give him up the way that you, you want to give him up?
Yeah. And on the original budget, I had Title V is fifty-one, three, five, one, and that's actually miscellaneous. That was a WSI grant and, uh, some other grants. So, there's forty-eight thousand additional dollars for twenty-one, twenty-two that hasn't been requested and we're going to request it now. Um, so that's additional income for us.
I see the REAP grant is blank. Yes, did we not get REAP?
We, we did not get REAP last year, didn't come in. We have to make application for it. So, that will be next year's month. Cause what was it in the past, twenty-seven, twenty-six? We have to make application for REAP. We have until, September twenty-four to claim the shoes month. Well, yeah, their years are different than our new. We have two of them, yes, yeah. Yeah, I don't know that we have one for this coming year. Yeah.
So, another twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Right, right. Now I was unable to find what that was. Didn't put it in there.
The website was down. Like I sent that email on and we were unable to get into it for six days or something. And, and that's where everything is held. It's from the state. There was a security breach or something or something with security. So, we're just able to get into it last night, so we'll work on that.
So, to recap where we're at, our, our gen- general fund ending balance increased actually from about nine forty-seventh to nine ninety-six. However, we, we did so with the transfer of half of our special reserve of a hundred and fifteen approximately and our building, ending fund building, ending building fund balances negative two hundred and seven thousand. So that recaps twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two. And then if we look at twenty-two, twenty-three, revenues are lower than twenty-one, twenty-two.
Pardon that, yes, the money, I didn't put anything in, the money. Again, we couldn't get into it, the ball was in there, but if we have income, we have it.
So, how come no Spanish reimbursement?
Because we, we didn't, um, get it yet.
Okay.
That's in the process too. That was an ask for, and I think it's only Milner, I think is what I've been told is what we broadcast out to last year. So I gotta find that out and get that quest out to whoever it is, which Milner and our sergeant or whoever it is, so.
Some of those reimbursements that should have taken place in June and April, whether hearing, all I gave up is that payroll and June. So some of that stuff was, we're just kind of getting backlog mistakes. We're not out along here. I don't think the state's been pretty good, but you know, to understand where we're at, so.
So twenty-one, twenty-two is brought up to date with what we have, but there may still be some outstanding revenues.
Right, right. That would be, and I don't know if you want to put it in twenty-two, twenty-three, back up to twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm not sure how to do that. But there's potentially another forty thousand dollars. You know, with REAP, it's about twenty-five. I don't know what Spanish is. It's only one school. Do they pay the whole bill? I'm not sure how that works. So possibly another forty-five thousand, which would put you up over a million carryover.
Again, recalling that we're in the negative on our building fund.
Correct.
We, we could choose to transfer.
Correct, yep. Yeah, we, we reduce the amount or get rid of it altogether.
Okay, so my question, Tom, on, um, if, by approving, but by approving a second reading of the twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary budget. So, it shows that we're going to have revenues of six point two million dollars and expenditures of six point four. Are we really? Are, by approving this in this form, are we giving our administrators the, um, the permission to deficit spend or do we still, we do so with the, still the encouragement that we look for, expenditure reductions going forward?
You can deficit spend. That, that's allowed. I think there was some talk previous to this since the last support retreat, um, reductions in expenditures. If you want to talk about that, you, you know, I think it's a smaller of, there is some reduction.
Did we find out about the?
No, I didn't have a chance to.
So, you want us to talk about some of the things we've been looking at or is that the discussion of the coordinator? Or is that for us to work on?
Internally.
I, I guess I'm comfortable if we work on it internally and talk about it as we move forward.
We can put word out on the Spanish and the REAP and the reimbursement, why that went up. But, um, as far as doing a second reading, you have to do a second reading today because we have to get it to the county with the tax levy. But what you can do is before October, something you can amend the budget and send an amended tax levy to the county along with the amended budget.
So the budget is the budget and we, we can, we can choose to reduce expenditures.
Correct.
Even within, by approving this budget, but it's the tax levy that we have.
It's the tax levy that's really driving.
That, that we have to do today.
And in the tax levy, we have to submit our budget. So if you don't change the tax levy, we don't need to send the new budget to the county. It won't impact the taxes that we, but they need the budget with the tax levy. That's all in one piece.
Okay, so then I think we should look at that tax levy or worksheet.
Yep.
That we did in the package, right? Packet. And it's on page forty-eight. This is what we was, uh, at before we'd create with the one million by forty-six, forty-one. That is three percent higher than what we asked for last year. So for general fund, our, our levy requests three percent more tax revenue than we requested last year. One million by fifty-four, forty-one. We're requesting our special reserve levy of seventy thousand, which we believe would exceed the maximum so that we can be sure that we get maximum of our three mils. And likewise, in the building fund levy, we're requesting four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which we believe will exceed the maximum that we can get so that we can be assured that we do get the maximum of twenty mils for our building fund levy to re, help replenish that with our expenditures in loss. So, I would seek a motion then to approve the second reading of the twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary budget and the approval of the certificate of tax levy as I've just described and to set the public hearing date and time, uh, at the date of our next board meeting, September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and I'll put eight thirty AM. Which would be hopefully immediately following the break. Is there a motion? Okay, Rhonda Day moves. Is there a second? Nagel, seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
I'll just highlight what you had said that due to time constraints that we definitely want to still look at our expenses side and we're not done finalizing.
We can always continue to seek savings. And likewise, income can change up or down. Based on many things.
You can actually amend the budget anytime during the year. It just have to be up until October tenth. You can, October fifteenth, anytime during the year, you can amend the budget.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Monica Heimbach.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel. Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Ron DeDee.
Yes.
Sonya Mial. Yes. Motion passes five to zero. The next item is the title funding consolidated application. Help me remember why.
Okay, so, um, for our Title I programming and those federal dollars, we have to submit, um, a, a plan yearly. And in June, you already approved the, um, the narrative, which was, you know, our bit data and what we're going to be spending the money on. And then in this month, you need to, once we find out what our federal dollars are, we have to make sure that our application matches the federal dollars and there was a change in that. So we have to go back in and amend it. So that's that piece that is in, yeah, that was right after that. To show that it aligns with it. So our federal, our Title I dollars that we're getting are one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. So, this should have been after the budget. Oh, wait. Sorry. Yeah, we just got into it.
Came with the bill thing. It was in the team, yeah.
We weren't able to access. We had already amended it and it already been submitted. We just need to have you approve it to.
Cause I think on the app, on this piece now, we have to put down the date that we, that the board approved it. That's one of the boxes, but one of the dates we have to put in. So we should find out where that is. There's a date we have to put in, someplace, I think, and when it was.
Okay. I'll make a motion to. Okay, Nagel moves to approve the title funding consolidated application as revised. Is there a second? Heimbach, second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach. Ron DeDee.
Yes.
Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Sonya Mial. Yes, motion passes five to zero. Right, now we'll move into the staffing updates. Two coaching resignation. In your packet, uh, we have a resignation from archery coach Sean Seigert. It does, it says Dave needs a full-time, it says, I would like to resign from that archery coach. Dave needs a full-time bus driver and I'd like to see Ray play one of his games now that he's in high school. So, does that mean he's applying for a bus driving position or he's agreed to?
Yeah, you're gonna take it.
That was Ed doing a route? No.
He was, yeah.
Okay, well, that's, that's positive, I guess. And we have a second coaching resignation, Caitlin Happy for, um, from her role as acorn, a yearbook advisor, that she has done for, for three years or more. And she says, I would like to focus on personalized learning in my classroom and spending time with my children. Um, I would just entertain a motion to accept both of those resignations.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thor moves to approve the coaching resignations of Sean Seigert and Caitlin Happy. Is there a second? Uh, Heimbach, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? No. Is there any discussions? But thanks for asking. Hearing none, uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion passes and those resignations are approved. Um, I guess I would ask them if you have any, uh, if you're making efforts to, uh, replace these positions or what their thoughts are. I assume that's where there's a couple.
Yeah, so for archery, we haven't moved forward on that. Suggestion that possibly we look at relinquishing the archery program back to the club and having them take that over since it is a high school activity sponsored and, that might be a further conversation. I don't know if that's now or the next meeting, Rob, Robin and I will work together on some of those. And Robin's gonna work the archery club and.
Yes, I think we would be looking for more information about that in, in the future with, after some research and discussion between, administration and our.
And I believe that I've got a couple of young teachers that are interested in the acorn job. So, um, I don't think that's going to be a problem where in the past that was going to be struggled with. No, I shouldn't have, I think we'll be able to fill that one, so we just.
Now, my question, is there still, I mean, there still is a yearbook and is there many kids that buy them or?
As well, some of us, uh, went for the year when graduated that we don't have it yet. I was gonna say, we're still waiting. Yeah, I think the hard part too is it's really hard for her to find kids that want to do the acorns. So she's having to do a lot of it on her own. So she's kind of gotten backlog with everything. So she has told me that the one from Bryce graduated, so two years ago. We hired Garrett. Yeah, we have Bryce Garrett. Um, that's done. It just needs to go to the printer, but she's backlogged on last year's, which, um, she'll need to finish to fulfill her contract. So she'll, she'll be working on that. But then moving forward, hopefully we can stay up to date on that. We do still have kids that buy them. I don't know how many, but I go back and I do.
I think there, I was told there are fewer every year and I, I understand that, but I, I do think that, and maybe there are better options. Maybe, maybe we move into a more of a digital platform or a yearbook. I don't know what others do.
I'm kind of thinking that, that I, um, new teachers probably have some good ideas because they've worked on them, you know, recently.
Okay.
Um, excuse me, I'm sorry. Just five seconds on this. Um, I spoke with the state coordinator, Damon Fish for Nass, North Dakota, and if there's not a tie to the school and maybe it can have a conversation afterwards. If there's not a tie to the school, if not a national program, clubs individually, yeah. So.
We do have, we do have a relationship with our, uh, shooting sports club that has a, a tie to the school and approval. But I think that this all needs to be explored with, uh, in more detail and not.
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you for being here. Yeah, that's all right. Thank you for being here. We appreciate your work on the program for, yeah. It's a great program. All right, with that, let's move on then to open positions with no action needed.
So, um, here, I just got a message from Mr. Dobit. So we, we have three elementary pairs advertised. We filled two of them. So, we're looking for one and we kind of have some ideas that, um, with one of our other pairs, I'm trying to fill some of those holes, but we'll still keep advertising for that elementary pair. Um, we are looking for two people to work in the kitchen because we had, um, another person resigning from the kitchen. But she's gotten quite a few applicants, so, um, hopefully they'll pan out for us and in the kitchen, she's working on that. Our problem, we have two custodians, um, positions that need to be filled. So, um, Shannon and, um, Mr. Van Rony and I, we will work on, we're gonna look at the budget and look to see because the people that are applying are, won't come over for the ways that we're offering. So, we need to relook at our budget and we're gonna work with Dave on that piece. He might be able to give you more, basically.
Won't have any applications. Was interested for that, not for that, I'm not, I'm not yet. Might have been more out of the horn, but that person deciding we're in kitchens.
So we're working on it and like I said, we'll look at the budget and we'll look to see if we can do some more with our compensation for them because we need to have, we lost two janitors and we need to have people to replace them because those duties need to be done. So it's either hire somebody or pay overtime and wear out our janitors and burn them out. So, we'll, we're gonna work on that. That's on our, uh, this week, so. And the special ed position that we have, and I know it's not ours, but it was certain of ours. Tracy was able to hire a retired special ed teacher and she's gonna come in and work part-time for us and do some keys managing and some interventions for us, um, three days out of the week. Um, but she will still be looking for somebody to fill that and she's hoping there's some grads that are gonna be done in December that she's been in contact with and hoping to recruit those grads so that we can have full-time special ed teacher. So, Nikki, if people on our staff are stepping up and they're saying, hey, I'll do this or I'll help out with this. So everything's been really good because they understand that, you know, where we're at and not being able to find somebody. And we're not alone in that, not being able to find people, so. And assistant wrestling, you probably saw that go out. We're looking for an assistant wrestling coach because it's just boring for right now that we have. So hopefully we'll get some applications for that. That just went out.
All right, and then for amended contracts with no action needed, that's just, um, it's just updating, um, those who've had the teaching staff that have had coaching positions.
Correct, yeah.
All right, next we'll move on then to the BW grant, which is in our packet.
Okay, so this has come before you already, um, and you had, um, spoken. Okay, so this has come before you already, and you had spoken about it, Dave can probably help me out with this, but the state called and Dave saying. You want the grant or not, because they would like us to deny it if we don't want it, and then they'll pass it down the road to somebody else that would like it. Um, or we can choose to take the grant, we have until the, until 2024. If you decide to order buses, it's a fifty-fifty cost share, which you can see on there, they awarded us fifty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and. On a bus for a hundred and eight thousand, I think is what you submitted, right? Maybe Dave can even order this than I have. Okay. Don't wanna mess it up. So if you decide to take the grant, we'll let the state know, we'll fill out the paperwork, but then you would have to, probably have to put the bid out for the bus. Hopefully in soon, not December, because our, our new bus coming, that was for the other Queen Diesel grant is not going to be here till. When the bus, cost of the bus has, have gone up, right?
Yeah, since, like, that bus, I think it was like a hundred and eight thousand. And you said that bus now.
And it's a fifty-fifty cost share, but with the max of the dollar amount that's listed in the grant, fifty-three nine forty-seven. It's not quite.
My question is, you said it, it's available, available till July or twenty twenty-four?
Um, we have to use it by July of twenty twenty-four. But they want us to accept it now or reject it, because then they'll pass those dollars on.
But if we accept it. We, I guess my question is if we accept it now, can we order a bus in next year's?
I'm assuming.
Disco year.
We can, correct.
We're not missing out on the dollars, but yeah, we're, no, that we don't really have that much dollars now.
But even if we were to order a bus, if we put out bids and order a bus in October. It would probably be in the subsequent school year.
That's what we're guessing, because this new bus was supposed to be here in January, correct?
But if we ordered one that soon and it did come. Prior than would be in this year's budget would be my.
Well, you could, one way around that is you could prepay it, or do a prepaid set. And expense it out in the next year. So on the books, it would be on twenty-three, twenty-four, although you would cash-wise with a paid one in twenty-two, twenty-three.
And we don't actually have, have the bus, we just have to show that it's been ordered.
Right, and I don't, Dave and I just had to file an extension for this last, for the bus that's not gonna be here too. It must have had to have ended.
And then we extended it till.
We just signed that paperwork yesterday.
All right, so is there a motion to accept? Nagel moves to accept the VW grant, is there a second? Heimbach seconds. I, I assume that we want to continue getting a new bus approximately every year or two rather than. I mean, what, what, how is our, we had this report at our annual meeting, but we have one bus that's still from the nineteen ninety's.
That's no more, we got sent outside that ninety-one. That's essentially what you'd be getting is fifty thousand for that bus. But I got, then I gotta scrap that bus, which is. Pretty good coin for that old bus, and that is actually too old for Queen Diesel. Bus number seven. Is like a ninety-nine model, that one would be scrapped. This VW graph are giving you a lot of money for.
All of our buses would be from different millennia. Right, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our administration contracts for Mrs. Sell as superintendent and Mr. Dobit as elementary principal. Recall at our July board meeting that we were concerned about the language that. That they would won't be able to get their jobs, their previous jobs back in the following year. Which we were concerned that maybe we would end up with two people contracted for one job. I shared the contracts with our attorney and her suggestion was to leave that language out. Um, and not, not place any such language in the contract, but include some discussion and include in the minutes. Some language such as she suggested to me. Our board greatly appreciates the willingness of Mrs. Sell and Mr. Dobit to step into these roles for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And should either wish to revert to prior roles after this school year is over, our board's intention is to be as accommodating as possible to their wishes. While still abiding by all required continuing contract procedures. We intend to remain in close communication with Mrs. Sell and Mr. Dobit throughout this school year, and we'll have further discussions with them about this topic. So I would ask for the board, we've already approved the, the financial terms of the contract and everything else. We just wanted clarification on that language, so I would ask for a motion to approve. The contracts as they now appear in your packet. With. That, with that, that sentence removed. And further to include the language that I just read in the minutes of the board meeting. I did share those, the entire email with Mrs. Sell and Mr. Dobit. Sell is perfectly comfortable with this. All right, so I would request a motion then to approve the contracts. As we did before and include that language that I've read. Include, approve the contracts without the language referring to the previous.
I added instructional coaching grades here.
Well, that, well, I think that was in the packet last time. Yeah, but, but the, the paper copy I gave you, I hadn't reprinted it, so everyone else, that had, and it also had his coaching. Okay, is there a motion to approve those contracts and the language in? Heimbach moves to approve, is there a second? Nagel, second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Robert Thor?
Yes.
Monica Heimbach? Ron DeDee?
Yes.
Sheila Nagel? Sonya Mio? Yes, motion passes five to zero. All right, now we have our request for tuition reimbursement from Ms. Sheeler. You wanted to give us, highlight some background on that.
Sure, so Ms. Sheeler sent me the email that I included in the packet requesting that we help to pay for the tuition. There are the costs for her to become certified to teach. College algebra and calculus and. Need to read what it says, so I just told her that I approve of the degree, I talked to Mr. Beta and he said that would certainly help our school out to be able to teach and be able to offer some of those courses. Plus, there might be a possibility to teach and reach out by distance learning. Or list through that, so I'm recommending, or I'm, I'm approving that what she's seeking and now it's just a few guys, whatever you decide, I include the.
So what is the approximate cost of this? She's saying six semesters for three credits, so, so eighteen credits, and back when we were doing TLA, it wasn't. Three hundred, three to four hundred dollars per credit, which I assume hasn't gone down.
Yeah, I remember what your credits are right now. Yes. Oh, you, you know about how much it's gonna cost per credit or the total would be?
I am not sure, I wasn't, I would, I kept looking to try and find that information and I couldn't find it without applying yet.
And, and Ms. Sheeler, are you, will this give you a master's degree in something, or is it just a series of credits for some kind of a certification?
So I already have my master's degree in curriculum and instruction, I finished it my first semester in Oaks. So this is just a series of classes that would allow me then to teach dual credit, because I didn't get my master's in math specifically.
And if I remember right, you were, you were well into your master's program before we hired you, so we, we did not share any cost of your master's program with you. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, but I was just finishing it when I moved.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Sheeler?
Can she teach the classes before the six semesters are completed?
That's a good question.
That would be up to whichever university we decide to go through, but DPI. Came out years ago and changed it to requiring these classes, so I kind of doubt it.
See, I'm thinking that it was the higher learning commission that was requiring, you know, Mr. Beta, that was requiring an master's degree. Yeah, and I'm not, yeah, I think we should, I think we should explore that, but just, I mean, if DPI is in control, they. They have made. What is provisional certificates available for that. I think we should explore that, and I think our board members maybe that don't know the difference between dual credit and AP. Dual credit, they take the class for credit here. And at the, and we get an ABCD map, and that's their, their high school grade as well as their college grade. With the AP, which Ms. Sheeler has been teaching a couple of AP calculus classes. The students take the class here and then they have to pass a test to college. That the AP exam to, in order to get college credit for it. Um, and Ms. Sheeler, have you had any students that have passed the AP exam?
Yes, both students passed last year.
Passed here, and her first year, I think there were five or six students. And none of the students were able to pass it the first year, but in this course, in, in dual credit, you pass. Your high school, you pass your, your college. Okay, so that's enough, maybe enough background, so. Where do we want to go with this? Is there, is there a motion to approve, and if, if so, you're, we're going to want to decide. What the, you're gonna want us to say what, if it's fifty percent or seventy-five percent. Note, in, in the background, Mrs. Sell has provided us, for TLA, we provided seventy-five percent of the passive tuition books. And then we have a few teachers that have worked towards master's degree and awarded tuition of fifty-six.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what.
You know when that would have been done?
Maybe.
Go back to old minutes? It may have.
I'm thinking, and then we need for Alicia's at U and D and I thought they.
Twenty, seventy-five percent. District will provide seventy-five percent of the cost and will be forgiven at a rate of twenty-five percent per year. First year, school year following completion.
What's the percent, twenty?
Seventy-five. And twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five.
First year.
Okay.
Well, I think there is something to be said for being consistent, right? I, I think that this, this would be very difficult for us.
And I, and I think I figured it out, it's probably about three hundred dollars a credit.
The minutes related to Katie Johnson, so seventy-five percent of the cost, it does not say seventy-five percent of the tuition.
You remember what Alicia's?
I don't remember. I shouldn't remember that.
That's too many years.
So eighteen credits that. So we'd be investing four thousand four hundred and five hundred over the next three years. All right, is there a motion to approve? And whatever you want in the motion is fine, just suggest, I think seventy-five percent of the cost and a repayment of twenty-five percent per year. Nagel moves to provide seventy-five percent of the cost of Ms. Sheeler's. Program and we're giving her a rate of twenty-five percent per year. Is there a second? Dave, second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Ron DeDee?
Yes.
Sheila Nagel?
Yes.
Robert Thor?
Yes.
Monica Heimbach? Yes, motion passes five to zero, and thank you, Ms. Sheeler, for undertaking this for our students. Next is the business manager consulting compensation. So we have Mr. Van Arnie with us. Recall that in May and June, he was still employed by the Valley City Public School District and we. Entered into an arrangement with Valley City Public Schools to reimburse them for his. And we entered into an arrangement with Valley City Public Schools to reimburse them for his time. And he was still on the payroll. Since his retirement, he has been working for us and we. He and I had an email exchange and he said he was making forty-three dollars and nineteen percent per hour. In Valley City when he retired and that would be acceptable for him. For his work with us. I think it's appropriate for the board to discuss and approve that or whatever is acceptable to the board. I guess my question is. I, I mean, I so appreciate what he's done so far and will continue to do. And how much longer and how, what, where do we have to get with Shannon here and, and cleaning up where? The loose ends, how many, how much longer do you think they should be with us? Will we need to?
And I don't see a lot of hours. After this one certificate of levy and then, and their budgets end up. I don't see, then it would just be coming down. And helping Shannon specifically, probably the software limited. And like the first big two payroll, you know, those types of things. And a lot of stuff that you can, we have a poll or email. Do you agree, Shannon? Going forward, yeah, I'm.
I know we had talked about the other hotspots would be filing out the quarterly reports, the payroll reports and then the ten ninety-nines and W twos in January.
Yeah.
But negotiations support in the spring.
Yeah, that could be, yeah, coming up with the reports that the board or the O A would want to see.
All right, so with that, I would like to have a motion to approve our consulting arrangement with Mr. Van Orne. At his requested rate of forty-three nineteen per hour or whatever is acceptable to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve. Continue to consult with us.
Okay, Thorpe moves to approve the consulting rate forty-three nineteen per hour with Mr. Van Orne. Is there a second? Day second, is there any discussion? It's been, it's been wonderful.
Been a challenge, but it's been good.
You like a challenge, don't you?
I do. I don't know.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Monica Heimbach. Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Ron Day.
Yes.
Sonny Miel. Yes, motion passes five to zero. And finally, the last action item is the business manager. Certification.
Right, we stole this off of the last tuition agreement, you know, that we do with TLA, so that's, I'm so. It's just kind of a first draft for you if this is what you choose or if you want to amend any of the figures, Shannon and I talked about it. I'm kind of give us a little more information that Shannon will just be able to take courses at her own time, right? Once she's done with them, she can start to actually, doesn't have to wait for like a college classes, right?
Right.
And if I'm, if I remember right, there are some that you might even be able to sort of test out. And we thought the entire tuition or fees for the program might be around twenty-five hundred, twenty-seven.
Twenty-six hundred for the tuition. And then of course, travel and the hotel stay, but I think there's only, I think, two or three a year. That you actually have to meet in person in this market, rest and fall.
And, and in some cases that, that travel is the same as school boards convention. Which you would probably be willing to. All right, so you have in your packet a proposed tuition agreement. With Ms. Jefferson for the. Business manager certification program. Is there a motion to accept that as presented or with any changes that you might? Nagel moves to accept the wish and agreement with form is Jefferson, is there a second? Heimbach seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach. Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Ron Day. Sonny Miel. Yes, motion passes five to zero. Our action items are complete. Moving on to policy, we have one policy for second reading, which we had before us back in May. Or we had a first reading in May and then we, there was nothing in our packet related to it in June. We revisited this. It's. My suggestion that there's a required policy, we should have, we should adopt what the third. The version that says, suggested from North Dakota school boards that has the. Definitions included. Which is the last version in your pack. If you would rather have more time to look at it, we can certainly defer action until next month, but if not. I, I recommend that we adopt it as recommended by. Is there a motion regarding policy, I have a second reading for policy, IBC, data protection and security. Heimbach moves to accept the second reading of the policy, IBC. And the form suggested by North Dakota school board association here in our packet and there's second. Nagel second, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. There are three first readings. Of policy change, officers of the board. Executive sessions. And exit interview, exit interview is, would be a new policy to us. So these are first readings. I didn't get a chance to look at them carefully. Were there? Many changes in the first two?
Not a lot. We pretty much aligned with them because this was just updated. On all twelve eight twenty, there's one of them that was just updated recently. But um, something, there's changes like in the vice president's duties. Added that the vice president may decide over meetings or portions of meeting when the president is absent, that wasn't in there. Or if there was a conflict of interest, they step in there. A lot of it, we already had had in our. Or if the president and vice president are absent, the most senior board member shall act as chair pro tem unless they refuse to serve.
Which is an issue with us. All right, I, I would entertain a motion to approve these three policies as first reading. Just if, if, for information, if there are minor changes, we can sometimes approve a policy without a, and wait a second review. But we'll just, I would just entertain a motion to adopt these first readings of these three and then we'll take a look at them next.
Okay, so then do I come back with the changes, like it, what it would be adopted at, right?
So on the second, on ECA P there's. At the bottom of the business. I think we should. This is the recordings and documents from an executive session to be sealed and where they're placed. I know I would have been responsible for keeping the recordings on the forest drive. And I, I created the recordings from my phone and I gave them to Carrie, I gave them in a sealed envelope to Carrie and she said, I'll put them in the safe. So. It's, I, I don't, I don't know what's, why don't you find out where they are and, and the, the appropriate description, proper description.
Maybe it should be in business.
And then BDBA, we have the choice of adding all that vice president. Yeah, yes.
You might add that provision there.
Yep, I would indicate it for our final. Okay. We have a motion and question for first reading reviews. Okay, is there a motion to approve these three first readings? BDBA, BBTAD and DK ABA. I'll make a motion. Nagel moves to approve the first reading of these three policies, is there a second? Sorry, Thorpe, second, is there any discussion?
That was a good thing about that, kind of was the superintendent leaving.
I know, I know. Well, in most cases in the policy, if there's something the superintendent's supposed to do but can't for some reason, then it's usually the board president.
So do you want the superintendent or designate me?
That was my thought. Yeah, because I, in some cases that you may want the, the, that person supervisor or you may not want that person supervisor to do an exit.
I guess you could choose business managers that designate who have the key, right?
But superintendent doesn't need, that means you can choose someone else.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, so we're voting on approving the first reading of those three policies. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no, motion passes and the first readings are approved. The next item on the agenda is the, oh, are the administrative reports. Those were in your packets. As noted, there are two, now two openings in the kitchen. Jeri reports that. We will be getting first delivery of beef in a couple of weeks. From South Forty Bees. And she just needs to let him know a week ahead of time what she needs. She's two openings. Looking for a new hot food. Hey, activities report. Golf is underway, football is underway, first game, first home game. Oh my goodness, the girls golf already had a tournament, August fifth. Can that be? They wouldn't have even had nine practices.
Goes on the day.
Must have been, maybe it was a scrimmage. Volleyball coming up soon. And then as answered some of our questions, Robin included in her report. Fifty-one dates, she says that she's subbed for, it looks like an hour, one to three hours. Any more. In her role as activities director and we agreed that she was even sharing on subbing. And it looks like she has. Good information in the technology director's reports. Enrollment. Looks like maybe down a little bit.
Yep. Random down from last year, but the elementary as of right now is down thirteen students.
Pretty across the, I mean, it's not. Is there a point grade that stands though? Or as far as you know, for fourteen across the island, it's not like there's seven.
Yeah, we sent thirty-seven up to the high school and only twenty-five are coming in.
Mr. Beta, can you highlight in the classes?
Yep. So for. We're taking some things up that junior high, we're going to get rid of the study hall portion of junior high, listened to feedback of the teachers and said it just. Wasn't as productive and we'd rather have them get some skills. So, you know, Robert, I talked to those for a while and for junior high, they're actually qualified to teach keyboarding up to eighth grade. They're extended, the elementary extends from first to eighth grade, so we're going to do keyboarding as a choice. So I went and visited all sixth graders, you know, we did seventh graders and said, okay, you can pick band and choir together. Band or choir and keyboarding or no music at all, keyboarding, so we had that sectioned off. And then below the keyboarding, Mr. Peterson's going to teach successful school life skills. So that can be study skills, that can be time management, both type of things that we know all junior high students need. And we're going to give that a go. Or the centers of. Well, they did financial literacy. Something called that, they had to change it to principal of marketing because jobs and accreditation to. Class endorsements, so that'll be principles of marketing, so students will either go to buy it for a semester. Another semester, they'll have a choice to get a principal of marketing or auto essentials, which they had last year, so those classes are all filled up. And then there are four members in our time, rather than being individual grades, we're going to kind of, it kind of like a houses approach, we're going to mix seven through twelve. And we're going to do some deciding on what we want that to look like throughout school year, so we're excited about that. Questions on the new classes?
Go in that current all time, the students work on work.
Yes, yep, it'll be always a time for work. There might be a day or two that we designate for certain activities or something that we can teach them. But yeah, it'll be a study time where they can go and find other teachers because all the teachers will be available. We're also going to bring all the kids back that aren't at the center last hour, back will be all here. Or last year we left them out there, they did some of the ramp up readiness out there, but we could come all here at the same time, so we bring them all back. The center was not disappointed about that, so.
And that, that's a twenty or twenty-five minute time?
Yeah, it's three oh seven to three thirty, so it's last twenty minutes of the day, which isn't ideal for some things. That time, but it is time, one, where everybody's here, but two, a lot of travel occurs, then I'd be taken out of an actual class. So it actually is beneficial value to.
And our new science teacher has been around for a month already, I think.
Yeah, I just called you as a comedian to check on her status for license or issues in the process, so without, but in this week she showed a license.
Sounds good. Any further questions or comments about the? Oh, is there anything you want to highlight in your report, Mrs. Song?
So I'm meeting with Maureen and Carrie and the Kennedy day after school and we're going to start talking about the duties in this. Oh, I mean, at four thirty later. And we're going to be just talking about responsibilities and roles because we're going to have to have the Kennedy. Start doing more, watch stuff, you know, in the past two years, we haven't had that. So we're going to be talking about that stuff and at that time and update on the plumbing. And the update I gave you in here was as of Friday, did Kevin get the two pieces? So we decided, Dave and I, by the end of the week, if they didn't there, I'll reach out again, we will, we'll take care of it. But we haven't paid that bill and. we aren't gonna pay that bill until we finish those things, so we'll see what Amy says, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to accept all of the administrative report? Nagel moves to accept the administrative reports. Is there a second? Dave, seconds. Any discussion? Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes. Okay, we have in our packet minutes of three different meetings, the two meetings on July the twenty-sixth, the closing meeting of the twenty-one, twenty-two board and the regular or annual meeting of the twenty-two, twenty-three board. As well as our minutes for the board retreats. Is there a motion? I would take a motion to approve all three of those minutes together. Okay, we, Heimbach moves to approve the three minutes in our package for a second. Nagel, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion or questions about the minutes to be approved? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes, minutes are approved. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is review of twenty-one and twenty-two financial reports and the only thing in our packet is the pledge of assets, so is the pledge of assets ready to be voted on or? Okay, so we, sorry, come.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have to unlabel it, we asked about that, David.
Yes, I think we do. We, we actually had them table the uh twenty-one, twenty-two financial reports and I think properly we should move to remove that from the table. Um just that one, because that's the only one we're going to act on. But there's no reason, we, we should just go ahead and approve the, the pledge of assets report because it's ready and done. The rest I'm hoping maybe.
Yeah, and we'll get July reconciled in the fourth time. Yeah, and then we'll have the budget in the yeah, we have to enter data app from today's meeting into that into the system, so we can run the reports.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to take from the table, the twenty-one, twenty-two pledge of the assets report, so that we can pass on it. I like motion. Heimbach moves to take from the table the pledge of assets report for twenty-one, twenty-two. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thorpe, seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes and now we have before us the pledge of assets report, which it needs to be approved and it is in our packet. We have a list of assets pledged at each of three financial institutions, Starion, First Community Credit Union and Bank One. Is there a motion to approve the pledge of assets reports? Nagel moves to approve the report. Is there a second? Dave, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes. And so we completed that pledge of assets report and we have not yet completed the final approval of twenty-one, twenty-two reconciliation balance sheet, revenue and expense in the year and financial. Um, so that's the end of the packet, but then if we go back into an email we got last night. That's the one that says budget. Uh, which is the title of the file is budget and it also has that consolidated report and we have before us the bills to be reviewed for approval. What's on the commercial card for twenty-eight thousand? Lot of books, buys and rules, um we know some computer software programs. With that quicker. Okay, yeah. Alright, um, is there a motion to approve the bills as presented in, uh, the email we received last night? Nagel moves to approve the bills as presented. Is there a second? Heimbach, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes, the bills are approved. Um, just for the good of the order, um I did apply to the D P I for the matching grant for our, for school board training and I had followed, the, the deadline for that is September fifteenth. Um, I had asked if there's any way we could get, um get the, get our training scheduled as soon as possible, so we could get it done and as I expected, it's a competitive grant. Um, I anticipate that we will receive the grant for it to pay for part of the training, but because it's a competitive grant, they will be awarding them a week or so after the deadline, so, uh, we will not be able, we will not be able to schedule it until it's September fifteenth. And what was the name of that? Um, BU legendary school board institute. So, uh, other than that, we'll have our regular meeting on Tuesday, September the thirteenth, followed by a public hearing. And that'll be seven AM for our regular meeting and October eleventh, seven AM would be our regularly scheduled over meeting. Okay, so, anything else for the good of the order? By the time we come back, the halls will be full of students and staff. If not, hearing nothing, I declare this meeting adjourned at eight seventeen AM. Thank you all and have a good day.